I will officially call the November 28th Regional School Committee to order. Could the roll?
Sure. Steve Owen.
Here.
Jean Fox.
Here.
Robert Clark.
Yep.
Laura Ramsden.
Here.
Will Stinkowitz.
Here.
Steven Sylvia.
Here. Anybody else recording the meeting? With that, I'll take one thing out of order since the cat's out of the bag with the Lakeville School Committee seat with Steven Sylvia. Do you want to give a quick intro?
Sure. Thanks, Steve. I was honored to get the nomination just over maybe two weeks ago and looking forward to working with the full group here and the superintendent's leadership team. Just a little bit about myself, I've been in the public school system for over 20 years, the past 11 as a school principal. I've also worked in the state legislature, state legislature, excuse me, since 1993 as an aide. So I hope that I can bring a unique perspective and looking forward to working with the group. But most importantly, the thing I'm most proud of is being a dad of two kids in the system and I've seen the impact of decisions made by this board and the leadership team here. So I'm looking forward to working and going here with a full agenda. So, thank you.
Welcome. Join me in the Pledge of Leadership.
(inaudible). Hi. Pledge of Leadership to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody here for public participation? Seeing none, we'll move on to the acceptance of minutes for November 7th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Fox and a second by Ms. Stinkowitz. Right. Any discussion questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention?
Abstain.
Actually, let's strike that. I abstained. I was not present.
Yeah. So you have two abstentions. Presentation, School Committee.
Okay. So we have 60 new junior and senior members into the ARHS National Honor Society Chapter. Mrs. O'Brien, the Library Media Specialist, had her proposal called "Flipping Library Instruction in High School," approved to be presented in the School Libraries Are For Everyone 2019 Conference. PSATs were administered to 182 sophomore and junior class members. Class of 2019 parents were able to attend a financial aid event. Handouts are available and parents/guidance are encouraged to visit the MFA website for further details. A former Upon-A-Quit grad, Sarah Martin, was at Upon-A-Quit to talk about her marketing as a performer in Nashville in preparation of her album release titled "Muddy Boots." It is available on Spotify, Amazon, and Apple Music. Thank you to Mr. DiTara, a resident of a sonnet who is a beekeeper and provided information on honeybees to Mr. Marshall's environmental and biology classes. U.S. Army veteran James Rollin, skyped Mr. Rose's entrepreneurship class on his military service and his journey from being in the military to becoming a managing partner at Takuba Security.
The Social Studies Department held its annual Voice of Democracy essay contest. The winners were third place Paris Anasio, second place Lizzie Bodwell, and in first place Logan Gurren. The Upon-A-Quit players performed 12 Angry Jurors. They held two performances and both were excellent renditions of the classic play. Student council held two successful events, game night and homecoming dance. Congratulations to Fiona Conway and Jake Munir, who won Laker Nation Awards. They embody our core values and beliefs in our vision of Upon-A-Quit graduates. Congratulations to Parker Abbott and Fiona Conway, who have been selected as interns, as SRO interns for semester one. Mrs. Fontaine, Senior Class Guidance Counselor, is pleased to report that 40 percent of our grade 12 students have applied to one or more four-year colleges as of November 1st. Class members continue to apply during the early application process. Congratulations to our fall athletes. A detailed report of the fall sports season will be available next month. Congratulations to Abigail Moynihan, who signed a national letter of intent to play Division II Lacrosse at Stonehill College. And we are pleased to announce that 52 members of the class of 2019 have received the John and Abigail Adams scholarships as a result of their terrific permits performance on the MCAS exam. And finally, the ARHS band participated in the annual band day hosted by UMass at Gillette Stadium. They were in attendance along with 3,500 other band members from 70 high schools throughout New England.
Thank you very much. Any questions for... Moving on to old business, FY '19 and '20 budget.
FY '19 is still on track. I've updated the revenue and expenditures to date. Also included in the packet is the FY '19 assessment sheet. There have been no changes since our last meeting. On the back of the report is the projected E and D. Nothing changed since the last meeting. FY '20 is underway. Mr. McDaris and I sat down and went over the first kind of principals' budgets there, what they put up. So we went through that. We're meeting with the administrators next week to go over it in more detail. We're still early in the process. I don't have anything to report to the committee right now, but as we continue, I'll keep you updated.
Probably be looking for some parameters from the regional FinCom next week in relation to that my budget presentation, which we moved to early February. It's typically been late January. We moved it back a week trying to gain a little more time in relation to state information. Steve and I know Derek's not here. We'll be getting back to the committee establishing those initial numbers. But we're looking forward to the meeting next week in relation to that. So when she says administrative team, that's all the central office directors, technology, facilities, and principals. And as we start to roll it out, it's been a really detailed process and I've been real pleased by some of the changes that Ashley's made to that. It's been, I would say in my five years, the most inclusive model that we've used in relation to building base. I think the principals have really been engaged. They've always been part of the process, but even more so. So we'll continue to keep you updated and we'll certainly have some more detail in the future.
Any questions on the budget update? Moving on to our new business, class size updates, transportation.
So I've kind of left that as a placeholder, Ms. Owen. In relation to last meeting, we had transportation and we provided that monthly report. We'll do that at the next meeting in December. I'm supplying you a class size update per really school committee request. It's the time of year where you don't see a whole lot of fluctuation in numbers, although there are a couple of schools, you know, a couple of times where students have made decisions and families have moved and so they wait, they do that around the holiday. So you'll see, you know, a couple of schools where you see four or five students, but really they're primarily personal decisions that have been made in relation to relocation. Most instances, they're situations that we knew about and we agreed to allow a student to complete the semester type of thing scenario. But I'd be happy to answer any questions, but obviously we'll start rolling those numbers into our FY '20 discussion when we look at projections. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions?
Pretty straightforward this time around.
Seeing none, we'll go to the ARHS donation.
So certainly what you see before you are some real generous donations. First, the high school piece, you know, I'm thrilled and pleased that you see Dr. Starkey's recommendation is certainly supported by me to support two separate donations to the high school. One is from the Suzanne Bennett Charitable Foundation. Those are the same parents, for those who, I think probably most of you know, but the same two parents, Mr. and Mr. Cody, who presented the van. So when you consider over the course of the last couple of years, the generosity of that family through this foundation to provide some significant donations, in this instance there, they have donated the entirety of the sound system for the gymnasium and I certainly would support that. We could probably take them separately because the other donation, although it says donation, it really probably shouldn't say donations, the other donation comes from the athletic boosters. Again, I would say in that instance also, they have really changed their format in relation to supplying on a yearly basis some significant and generous donations to a variety of teams and programs throughout. You kind of see that reflected here. You see lacrosse, you see soccer, you see the baseball team, and then technically obviously the softball team actually having some impact there. The gymnasium piece, you know, I think the town should be as happy as we are in relation because it obviously now allows town meetings to take place with a sound system that allows us to do so. So it would be certainly my recommendation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. In the past, once the committee has supported and hopefully you support my, the recommendation here, we will provide something formally and reach out. The donors here have asked to not be present and really simply just want to continue to provide support, but I'd be hard pressed to think there are a lot of communities that are getting some of these types of generous donations like ours. So I'm real pleased and certainly we all benefit from that generosity. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I certainly would look for your support.
I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion to approve the first one, which is the sound system for the gymnasium.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
Just a really nice acknowledgement again.
Huge.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The second donation, which is the athletic boosters, I'll entertain a motion to accept that.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Again, grateful acknowledgement. It's really great stuff.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, the AES donation.
So continuation of some real positive news, I would recommend that we support this additional quest. It did not come earlier because as the PTO and other groups that have funded, this actually is the balance of what will be a comprehensive tech piece. You recall, this donor had made a previous donation when there was a discrepancy between the various groups and the target or goal amount. He stepped up and made an offer to capture the balance difference. So it will allow that school, which was our plan all along, to provide as much support and technology to as many classrooms as possible. Now we're able to capture all of them.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Sound move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Related to that, can you just, what, so I think there's a bunch of moving parts to this. Can at a high level, what was the total technology donation as far as equipment?
Piece, so between, off the top, I want to say, I don't have the exact total, Steve, right in front of me and I certainly could have Ashley access that. It was in the range of $38,000. I mean, that's the magnitude of it. We had the Read-a-Thon fundraiser, which was a, which was a school-sponsored fundraiser through students. Then we had the PTO making a generous donation of, I believe, $10,000. On top of that, we had a couple of donors, one who wanted to remain, excuse me, anonymous, and then also this agency making two separate. So that's, quick picture, I can have for the next meeting, kind of the breakdown of what it looked like.
But essentially, it was a number of Chromebooks outfitted for each of the classrooms.
Yes, yeah, yes, yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. As far as the detail, yeah, the, actually carts will be set up or will be available in every classroom throughout.
I'm assuming that Mr. McComma put a stamp of approval. Okay, good.
Yeah. Technology was part of the process throughout, correct?
Perfect.
Was part of, even, just to go back, just even for example, the sound system, because there's a tech piece to that. There's an, there's an Apple iPad that has to be connected and so we had to include the technology as part of that too for the setup of the facility, but yes.
Next on the agenda is school improvement plans.
There they are.
So as we discussed at the last meeting, it wasn't going to be a formal presentation, but we've all received these last week. Do you want to give a high-level intro and then we can open up if any specific questions?
Yeah, so what I, I haven't received any questions. I know you've had the packet. My recommendation would be is we have two members that are not present tonight that may be at our next meeting in between now and then, if through the chair or vice chair or directly to me. If you have specific questions, whatever the chair and vice chair would like to see, specific to the five plans. They're pretty comprehensive, obviously. The requirement is not that they need to be approved by the school committee and you did endorse the kind of the process that principals will save them one night out. They'll be spending a few other nights out with their schools, but I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. These plans clearly reflect the strategic plan that we're in the process of updating as it relates to the district, reflect some ongoing priorities, but also leave some local flavor as it relates to the school councils and school principals where I think it should be. We obviously have some change in at least one administration at the middle schools. We'll be making some adjustments there with Mr. Petota's announcement, but I'd be happy to answer any specific questions. I think I really would be not doing a fair assessment to do highlights or take from the principals. What I would say though clearly is what you see reflected here is the hard work of principals, students here. Both these young men stay, want to stay around because students at the high school level are part of the school council process and the improvement plan. So if you have a high school question, they probably could answer better than me, but I'd be happy to answer. I didn't come with a formal presentation because we kind of talked about the fact that it's really not necessarily the venue here, but I'd be, you know, if there are specific questions or issues or questions, I'd like to be there and back to the principals and then come back with a more detailed response.
No, that's perfect. I'll open up to any questions from the committee.
Yeah, sure. I just, I think it's great that we're saving them a night out. I truly do. If we could not maybe find a way just not to lose the progress monitoring piece from them, just to maybe get a brief update, maybe this spring, that would be great. And again, they don't, they don't have to come, whether they just provide an update or whatever, that would be great. So, thank you. Yeah, no, that was something that you had recommended and I think it was essential because I think sometimes what was missing is you didn't see anything or hear anything until the next plan that appeared to almost roll out the same type of message. And what was lost is, well, how do we make up? So I certainly will, we had kind of targeted that March timeframe, I think, and I certainly could adhere to that. And I don't think, in some ways, it allows the principals or administrators to come out here and give some highlights and speak about their schools at that time. So I, based on what, you know, the chair and vice chair ultimately decide, I certainly would support that and we could certainly arrange that where they came and spoke to the specifics behind the plan.
Yeah, that's important.
Any other questions?
If I could just comment, as somebody who has to write these myself, I appreciate the collaboration that goes into these, the identification of the critical issues, the strategies, the measurable goals. I think the format is great and looking forward to, as Will pointed out, getting some updates, but it certainly touches on rigor in the curriculum, the social, emotional, because there was some great stuff in there.
Was there any, to the two high school students, was anything of your school improvement plan that was near and dear to you guys?
It's just, it's very NIESC-based because that's something that the high school's doing right now is they're doing their every-five-year NIESC report. So a lot of the goals here are based off of the previous NIESC report and how to improve on that and improving for this NIESC report. And also for MCAS, there's some changes that were noted in it from, instead of the, how we have it now, which was proficient, in advance, is turning into meeting exceeding.
Right. Thank you.
Is that a problem?
No.
Just asking.
No, that's just pointing.
Just identifying what you've noticed.
That school council talked about.
Okay.
Going over this.
Thank you.
Any other?
I told you he'd be able to articulate it better than me. So.
Start there from now, so. Seeing none, we'll, reports to the committee.
Facilities update. We, Rick and I went over to the Free Town Finance Committee meeting tonight. They approved the emergency transfer for the hot water boiler. Bob Suze is going to reach out to the vendor and get that underway. It's about a four-week lead time, so we're hoping to do it over Christmas break. That's the goal. The Grease hot water boiler was replaced over Thanksgiving. The first pass of cleaning of the boys' locker room happened today and we're hoping to do a second pass on Saturday with the timing of, the school uses the pool during gym, so they're in that locker room, so we're trying to coordinate with the timing of cleaning it. Also, there was a request to look into the temperature of the showers in the girls' locker room. Bob has looked into that and they're getting the part and that should be fixed for Friday. So.
Was it cold?
Yeah.
That stinks. Frigid was the word.
Yeah.
So that should be.
That was also the original hot water boiler at Free Town as well. So that question came up at finance.
Did. Some of these facilities items were based on the conversation we had with Steve and Jean last week. The high school auditorium armrests, those pieces have been ordered. They're here. We're going to be installing them, so that will be updated for the next event we have here at the high school. The oil contract, the terms of our, the pricing of the oil contract is here in the report. If you have any questions, let me know. And then also the technology piece, it was vetted through Craig and Jim. We're getting Chromebooks, the warranty license, some mice in the tub that they actually sit in for the classroom at AES.
Any questions for, just on the two boilers are replaced, that was a replacement, correct?
Those are replacement of hot water boilers, not the oil boilers.
Yes.
Right.
Okay. And longevity of those? I know the ones that were in there were probably long past due, but.
Probably 25.
I don't have an exact number, but I can, I can look into it.
I mean, those are, so both those, well, well beyond.
Right.
But it's typically a 20 to 25-year type of life shelf. Let me think about 40 years. If I may add, just for finance in a sense, I did, I did receive a call from the chair of the Board of Selectmen in Lakeville, who also represents FLEP. I just wanted to give the group from a finance perspective an update, a very encouraging one. I guess, on one hand, the organization is not going to move forward with continued grants, which is, may start out as a negative, but what they would like to do is collapse their existing funds and make one full donation to the district, maybe as early as the next school committee meeting. He reached out to me. He asked me some specific areas then, and we're in the process of trying to give him some detail in staying with the mission, which is for, well, which FLEP has been, which is around meeting the needs and providing support and resources for teachers in the classroom. So for example, we had a conversation, although security might be an area, really probably would be a little bit outside an area they would want to support. So we're looking at technology. We're looking at a couple of other things, textbooks and materials and you should, in the future, receive. We're talking about an existing balance of close to $7,000 in that organization and they intend to make the donation. Once I provide him with that information, he can then go back to those board members that's still in our existence before the check is cut. And we talked about potentially turning this around as early as the next school committee meeting, which I explained to him was December 12th. So, bit of good news. I don't, as superintendent, often get a phone call as I'm driving from one place to the other and say, oh, by the way, I have $7,000 to hand over.
It's a good trend.
It's, when you consider where we're kind of at in today's agenda, a nice, a nice problem to have, which is to decide and determine what's the best use and value and priority. So I thought this group, which has been obviously engaged and has brought FLEP forward, should know that I think at least in one final gesture, they really feel this is the best use of the funds that exist and they want to make sure it gets to the schools. So I appreciated that and I thought I'd share that with you tonight.
Is the intent that they want a few ideas and they're going to pick it?
That's my question.
Or are we going to say, thanks, this is what we should?
Yeah, that's the question.
I, my interpretation of the conversation that we had and against this mine was that I would be recommending to him the, where we would like to see that money spent. He did not, and I think that he was supportive of that. What he didn't want to do is speak for other individuals.
Sure.
So he didn't want to, he wanted to be able to say, here's what the superintendent's recommending, we support. I think as long as it falls within where I think their mission has been, I didn't see an issue. I didn't get a sense that he wanted a vote on their end to pick and choose. I wasn't intending to give him multiple areas. I was going to prioritize on meeting with my group and then move forward one priority.
Good. Any questions on the potential FLEP? Moving on to Dr. Korea.
Sure. At the last meeting, the board members asked me for some information and so I tried to provide that to you here. The first one is the grant history and I think Derek was the one who asked me if I could go back a couple more years. So we started with FY '15 through FY '19 and you have that information to look at. I'll just point out a couple of things that might be of interest. So Crystal Springs is what we call our N and D, part of Title I, and they haven't been, they started taking a share in FY '16 and so they've been taking a share of the grant ever since. Their share since FY '16 has almost doubled, if you look at that. And FY '19, this was the first time we had a private school that was eligible for taking a share of Title I as well. The other thing that's not noted here in the table, but is of interest, is that in FY '16, our economically disadvantaged numbers were 21.3% and we're now at 26.6%. So we have gone up by 5.3% since FY '16. Most of what's in Title I that you'll see, it's like, for example, in FY '19, our allotment is 260,691. Most of that goes to the salaries of our reading specialists. We have three reading specialists in the district. That covers their salaries. It also covers their MTRS, comes out of Title I grant as well. So that leaves us about $20,000, I guess, to play with in the district, which helps to support interventions for our students, for our Title I students. So we are a targeted assistance district, so we are supposed to be using that, those funds to supplement and not supplant the interventions for students who are Title I. So Title II is more for professional development, so that's a professional development for our teachers, but a lot, a large portion of that usually goes to our mentors who receive a stipend for mentoring our new staff. So it depends on the year, how many new staff we have, but Title II is mostly for professional development and for the mentor stipends as well. I put Title IV there. Title IV is recently new. We got Title IV last year and again this year. The thing with Title IV is that it is very specific in what's allowable and what's permissible for the money. So they say it's to provide students with access to a well-rounded education. A small percentage of it can be on technology. It's supposed to be for improving the safety and healthy well-being of students. That's where I'm able to do a lot of the social, emotional PD that I've been bringing to the district comes from the help of the Title IV grant. The Title IV grant is really not usable for supplies or materials or things of that nature. So it's a little, it's a little more restricted in how we can use those funds. The other thing I put there, just because it's of interest, is if you remember, we lost the academic support grant. Desi no longer offers that and that is something that we were using for MCAS tutoring and we were able to offer that at the middle school and the high school. So we still are offering that. The middle school, we're offering it in a shorter timeframe only because we're using some money from, some money from the Title IV grant to help with that, but we just don't have as much funding like we used to with the academic support grant. So that's an overview of the grants and how much we've either lost or how it's changed over the years. I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions as best as I can and I think Ashley has some data on that too, over the past few years. The other thing I provided you was with the English learner program because we wanted to take a look. And so I want to explain first that I did the bar graph and you'll see some of them only have two bars and some have three. So let me explain, when I started. So let me explain, when I started in this position three years ago, there, there's a lot of missing data from this, this program, and there was a lot of work to be done with the English learner program. I think part of the reason with, was because we never really had one before, and we are seeing the trend that the number of students, if you look at the screenings, 31 screenings already this year alone, that tells you that 31 students came into the district with a home language survey that had a language other than English listed as spoken in the home. So our screening numbers are very much, as you can see there, increasing, which tells us that our numbers will increase. We're at 20 right now, being directly serviced, not counting our, you know, some of our other students who are being monitored, but it's only November. We do have a lot of students who will move in and out in this program. So for example, this past week, we lost two students in the program, but we screened two more just this week, that will be picked up. So some leave, some, there's some transience also in this program, but I wanted you to see that. I think it's also good to note that for the past two years, having Christine, there's been some consistency. Prior to that, we haven't had as much consistency with this program, because we had a teacher on medical leave and then we had a long-term sub. So it's been nice to have the consistency over the past two year, last year and this year. And we just want to do the best we can for the students and be sure that they're getting the recommended service time that, that they need. The other piece that you asked me for was the attendance data, and I think that you got that electronically, right? Not, not a hard copy. So Carol Holton, our database administrator, put that together. As an admin team at the admin council next week, we'll be reviewing this data, so we'll have more updates for you later. But we wanted to just take some time to analyze it ourselves and to take a look at this data. But you will see when you look in the school improvement plans, because I worked closely with the principals on these, that each principal has something in there, some principals more than others, but everyone is starting to look at the attendance piece, now that it's an accountability part of our MCAS, and addressing that in one way or another. So we'll have more for you on that.
So she started off with a smirk, if I add, because what she didn't share with you, that I'll share with you, could be told it would be in your packet, except I asked her to pull it, but we didn't pull the last sentence there. And the reason is, for those of you that are educated, my administrative team hadn't had a chance to even review the, the data that you received. So we did send it to you electronically. I didn't want to have a lengthy discussion tonight where we haven't even, as an administrative team tackled this, but I don't know, you know, our initial observations were probably like yours, if you had an opportunity to see it. There's some significant numbers of students absent at the various grade levels that I'm not surprised, I get the daily attendance, but I think the vast majority of parents in the community and families would be surprised at the, at the excessive absenteeism across the board. And we're trying to address that, you'll see it reflected in some plans, but I just wanted you to know that the plan right now is, for the leadership team, all five principals, some of them have already established attendance committees within their schools, to review and take a look at the various components that make up attendance, which is obviously the home, but also services and, and are there other things, socially emotionally, that are happening that we can maybe provide and do some supports? Are there some checks in place? Some of it's simply reporting, because there's a whole different mechanism by which you report students that are absent. But, but the request came from here, and absolutely Marlene did provide that. And, and I just wanted this committee to know that it's a work in progress by the administrators, as we take a look at that. And you'll see the different percentages if you had a chance to look, if not, I'll resubmit it back to you so you can see it, but it's, it's telling. You know, at the end, at the end of the day, we can be critical about the accountability system that the state has put in place. They've tried to bring in more indicators for success for schools beyond just the MCAS scores. This is one indicator. And at the end of the day, they're basically saying, listen, if students aren't in school, how are they learning? And so it's our challenge now to kind of take a look and make sure that we work with families in relation to personal reasons that people are out, professional reasons, obviously medical and health reasons, and make sure that we are making that, you know, if it's a situation where kids are simply not coming to school, because they're, they're struggling, those, you know, all those factors. There's a lot with this, and it's something that I just wanted the committee to know. We're hitting head on, you'll see it reflected in some plans, but I can tell you across the board, it, it's happening with all, at all five schools, and Marlene can speak to that. So I, I know it's not reflected in a detailed discussion, if you have specific questions on what we did scan to you, forward it to me and I'll be sure that I share that with the principals. But it's a, it will be, we'll be rolling out some, some specific activities and actions in relation to, in addition to what you've seen in the plans reflected there. Would I be happy to answer any questions, I know Marlene would as well, I think Ashley got some additional information on the grants. It's something we're working on, but.
Why don't we, for Dr. Korea's report, any questions for Dr. Korea?
No, but thank you, that was great.
Thank you.
I just, of the screenings that you've done, do you have a feel for how many will, you will actually pick out?
So out of those, when you see that 20 number, out of those 31 screenings, some of those screenings are included in that 20. There, she's doing actually a few more screenings this week that are not included in that 31, but anyone that did qualify from that 31 is included in the 20 right now.
Any other questions for Dr. Korea? Just to reiterate, because we talked about that, this is all being done by the Department of One, correct?
Yes.
So just to reiterate that aspect of it.
Just a little hint or forecast for FY 20, may see something reflected in the budget.
And we most likely should, yes.
We're taking a look at that.
I have a question on the grant pieces. Outside of the obvious MCAS tutoring, has there any item that we have removed from support based upon the reduction in these grants? Obviously, we're, Title I, we're sort of flatlined from FY 16, but are there any big ticket items that we've had to remove from a support perspective because of the lack of state aid in that?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say at this point that there's anything that's a, a supportive piece. Because it's a supplement and not supplant grant, a lot of the extra are things that the teachers really like to have. For example, databases online that they, they like to have for the kids, like Pebble Go or Reading A to Z. A lot of that stuff I can give to them if I have the extra in the grant, but not necessarily if we don't. The other thing is, for example, like last year when we had Maria and Beth come in and do the intervention piece for us for six weeks at the end of the year to help boost those kindergarten students. If the, if the grant is short that year, that's something, that is a support piece that I can't always provide. I try, but if the money's not there, we are short that, then that's an intervention that doesn't happen. The summer jumpstart program, last summer that we did for the first time, we were fortunate to have that. If the money is there, I'm able to do it, if the money's not there, I'm not. So again, it's supplemental.
Got it, okay. And then on the, the attendance piece, obviously it's still fresh. It may make sense when we do that mid-year update, that each of the principals sort of tackle that particular item. That way allows your team to formulate a plan, maybe get some of the action items in place, so that we can see some, maybe some early benchmarks we would have for that. But it may make sense that meeting of the grant.
Yes, we can, I can definitely make sure that's included.
Ms. Curly?
Probably just to get there, just from a grant perspective, just so what we're trying to do through Ashley and Marlene, certainly Liz, you see these grants listed here, but the other grants that are, that are supporting salaries, and we're, we're trying to find what the best approach is to make sure we capture it within the budget process. Notice I'm careful how I word that, I'm not saying it has to be part of the budget that we submit, because it's not currently, but I think it's important that people recognize that we are carrying salaries based on grants. Ashley, you want to add to that?
Yeah, before, the, the big issue is, where it is very transparent, is when we lose that grant and we are forced to.
Carry through.
Carry it over, and it makes it look like that we're adding resources when the reality is not. So I think that's a good tactic, we need to figure out that way, so as you put it, part of the budgeting process, and felt to that.
No, that's a good point, but I wanted to go back to the, the attendance thing, because that was very concerning to everybody, and obviously to you as well. Is there some sort of a timeline you're looking at? We're talking about a progress update, but it'd be nice to know if there are gonna be some mechanisms in place in the surveys, you know, the discussions with, with families, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's the conversation that I haven't sat down with each principal based on, in fairness to the, the request that came, that's the, that was the first time the principals had seen it in that format. They get their daily attendance, as any principal does, they can list those students that are, that are high flyers or that are chronics and family issues, but they haven't seen it that way. So what, what we're, what I know is happening already, Jean, and why I'm, it's a little premature, is I know in a couple of schools, they've established an attendance committee, they're bringing, where they have guidance staff together and, and kind of really troubleshoot, so I can, so it's ongoing. It is not gonna be something that's delayed or has to roll out. These are things that we're taking some action on, and, and some schools are, are taking action on it already, I don't want to mislead you to think that.
Well, that's the thing, the sooner you intervene, the better.
To do that, so.
That's all, and then, yes, we'd like to see what the mechanisms are.
It's gonna be varied a little bit from school to school, and obviously age level of children is a factor there. There's a, there's a, you know, a whole nother aspect of high school and requirements, I mean, and stipulations, but it's something that is absolutely on the radar, it's gonna be on our agenda for next Tuesday. And I certainly would encourage, if you have any issues or questions or specific concerns, bring them to my attention, I'll be able to share them with the principals.
Good.
If I could just add to that, outside of the, what I saw in the school curriculum and the obvious family engagement piece, you're on to something with the reporting, I think the state has issued guidelines on what the reporting looks like, and, and, you know, the district would be best served by really taking a look at that.
We've, yeah, and Steve's politely pointing out, what we came, what we found out, really is in some instances, we were not, we needed to more properly reflect and report students, for example, who were out on medical, who were receiving tutoring, because there are requirements, and, and the state has rolled them out now. So there are some students, and I'm not saying it's gonna take away all our numbers, but certainly there's some, there's a reporting piece that has to be taken care of and cleaned up, and where, that's gonna be part of this process as well.
Anybody else have questions on that? Director of Student Services, Ms. Curly?
Thank you very much. Just following up on the grant issue, one of the grants that was not carried over was the 274, which is a special ed program improvement grant. So that was lost unless the district, unless districts were identified as being in need of technical assistance. So we did not receive any, any money. So that was a loss here, I'm not sure what historical numbers were, but that is a loss. That could go for professional development training and other, other items. So jumping into the report, obviously the fiscal year 20 budget season's underway. I've been working collaboratively with the principals and Ashley and Superintendent Medeiras on, on those needs, and, and those will be forthcoming. We have a new item with the DESE state legislation. Governor Baker has signed into law the Massachusetts Dyslexia Screening Law, which requires districts to screen for certain neurological factors, including phonemic awareness and naming speed for the younger, early, early aged children, so that interventions can be put in place. This is similar to a vision screening or different screenings that are currently underway. Right now, the DESE is working with the Early Education and Care Department to come up with some guidelines for districts, but we will see, I'm gonna hear more about that in the future. Additionally, Dr. Korea and I will be going to DESE-sponsored tiered focus monitoring training on December 11th, which is going to be the preparation for the audit for civil rights, special education, and ELL. So more will, more will come in that. As I discussed last meeting, we have the self-assessment coming up quickly this spring, and then the audit will be sometime onsite next school year 1920. For curriculum instruction, I have met with the elementary principals and adjustment counselors, as well as our two administrators, to work towards consistency and equity along, among the two elementary schools for both programs and interventions. And we're formalizing the BBST, which is the Building Based Support Team Process for students who may be struggling or are at risk. For professional development, the Office of Student Service Small Leadership Team participated in the 2018 Special Education Summit by Lyons and Rogers in Randolph. The focus was on trends in special education, including legal issues, and the annual special education and 504 case law update, which is very helpful. Last evening, we had the CPAC meeting here at the high school. We learned that Crystal Eng is going to be resigning her post at the end of the school year to pursue an advocacy career. We're gonna work with CPAC and the community around, and administrators, building principals around identifying potential new board members for the subsequent school year, but she, she was kind enough to give us plenty of notice to recruit some new members into that board. We are also working collaboratively on some topics or potentially speakers for the spring, spring meetings. And our next meeting, it seems crazy, but it's January 8th, not that long, at 6:30 here at the high school as well. A couple items under special education staffing, we recently received a notice of a resignation at the middle school. Interviews are underway for that, and we continue to interview for the open position at AES, so.
Just to clarify, so that's a retirement?
Yes.
A retirement. So a person who had worked in the district for some time, we envisioned, had not given notice, thought was gonna complete the year, there are a variety of personal, professional things that played into that, so that's why we have the kind of the mid-year piece. And, and absolutely Liz is correct, we're, it was already something we had posted as a long-term piece, now that will now look to be more permanent.
And a couple of items under miscellaneous, in furtherance of the whole home-hospital attendance issue, we are formalizing a procedure which is going to allow the schools to capture some of the student absences, where the students are receiving either home or hospital-based instruction, which is, is gonna help. Hopefully, the goal is to offset the penalty, if you will, for students who are out on, you know, medical, medical need, especially over extended periods of time. And lastly, we've identified DCF-involved students who are programmatically responsible for, of the district. We are looking to transfer that programmatic assignment back to the fiscal LEA, which is oftentimes the, the district of origin, which is gonna free up some of our time and resources in student services. So we're working constantly toward efficiencies, and hopefully this will lead to greater efficiency. And lastly, we have the added district enrollment, which is updated for this month.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Curly?
One, the Dyslexia Screening Law, which is fantastic, they're gonna come up with new regs, I'm sure. There's nothing in there about how that will be funded, these early interventions will definitely be identified.
That's correct.
Yeah, just, I know. We just need to keep that on the radar as well, and I'm sure you are.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Moving on to subcommittee updates, Superintendent Evaluation?
So I failed because I went away for 10 days, but I have to call you tomorrow.
To be continued.
Well, yeah, we, I wanna wrap it up though, and we're in a good place.
Policy Subcommittee will be meeting on the 12th, and there'll be two sections presented to this full committee for approval.
Getting close.
We have one more letter in our policy alphabet, so hopefully we get that.
What are you gonna do with yourself?
Sherry had an idea, I mean, quickly. And then the Regional FinCom, we're meeting on the 6th. As I mentioned, the towns wanted to add another meeting, which, which is great, so we'll continue that conversation there. Any business?
I just would like to know next week, in case any board members receive any complaints or criticism, there is, there was a, a Board of Selectmen kind of open meeting in Freetown scheduled for tonight, which was postponed. Did not impact the school district, they moved the meeting to next Wednesday, December 5th. Didn't ask the school district if the, the auditorium was available. We made it available, but we had an ongoing activity that night, which is well-attended, our grade one storytelling. I'm only sharing that with you in that we tried to see if it was possible, they had already broadcast publicly, and, and we worked real well with the town. The issue is, and I can see it happening, they're at the same time in Freetown next Wednesday, and I can imagine someone's going to say, probably not in the best tone, what are they doing having a school activity on a night? It was, it was a school activity that was already scheduled, and so I just want board members to hear, if in fact it comes up, especially the Freetown board members, we usually work around those things. I actually reached out, the principal reached out to the Board of Selectmen and also the town administrators, saying, is there any way that we could look at another timeframe? We have a lot of parents, a lot of, parking could potentially be an issue. They indicated that at their, their public meeting the previous night, they had already broadcast, which begs the question, are you really requesting use of the facility, but I didn't really kind of go that route. I just wanted this group to be aware that both events will take place, we're gonna make it work. One's in the auditorium and they use classrooms, it's usually over 100 parents or so there. In the event you do hear that, we do, in, in most instances, make every effort around voting and everything else to work around that. In this instance, you know, the, the school makes sense. I mean, they, in fairness to the town, the one thing they did say is, we can look for, to another venue. They're really limited, right, in Freetown for venues, you mean, you're not really gonna have. You mean, you're not really going to have the, the size that we would have at the school. So we agreed that we would run both events. I just, from an informational perspective, wanted you to be aware that if you do get a, receive a call or a comment or conflict, it was, the school department had already previously scheduled this activity. Principal, you know, asked me, do you want to change? No, I don't want to change a student event. We have a lot of things happening in December, as you saw in the back, back page here. I just might, want to make you aware, not that any action needs to be taken, but.
Well, I beg to differ on that. There's been a big deal about making sure that we segregate those kinds of activities, and it's been an ongoing big deal, and I'm kind of surprised.
Well, that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention.
No, and I appreciate that. I do appreciate that, but I am kind of confused by the whole thing. I'm assuming that they're going to take care of making sure.
It was, it was the public hearing regarding the company, the, the whole issue, and I think what had happened is it was broadcast that night, it was postponed, they didn't expect the postponement, so they established a date. We can all see that happening, but they didn't run it by to see if there was another activity that night. And we'll, we'll make it work, but I just wanted you to be aware, especially as, Jean, as you pointed out in the past, we've been criticized for not, you know, having conflicts like that. It wasn't really something we could, we could avoid.
Anything else? Our next meeting is December 12th.
Comment on this, or is this disinformation, Steve?
Yeah, this is disinformation.
It's December 12th. The main topic on that agenda is the technology, am I correct?
Yeah, you have two presentations, unless you want to change that. We have both food service and technology.
Yeah. I'd like to open it up to the committee on those particular topic areas. Is there anything particular they like to see as part of this presentation?
The food service one, I think, in my opinion, it's always been pretty good. We get updates on utilization.
I think samples would be nice.
Samples would be nice, and actually, one year we had samples.
Yes.
So I, I, yeah, samples would be really good, but, but I like, I like to hear what, you know, the, the rate of return, I want to hear how many kids are using it, if they, the breakfast thing. I think her reports have always been very, very good. That's just my opinion.
The only thing that I'd like to, and we've talked about this, is some sort of multi-year plan, especially we're coming up to a budget perspective.
You have talked about that.
So especially if there's capital improvements in those functional areas that we need to start to plan for, especially in the area of technology, but also food service is another focus. So if we could add a section talking about that aspect, I'm not looking for a full plan, but I think at least a multi-year plan, so we can start planning for some of those if necessary.
I mean, we can move one of those presentations.
I, I don't think it is, my, my only concern, and we can address this when we plan next year, when we get later in December, we start cutting into school activities, which then cuts into your time. So maybe we try and keep the school committee meeting to that first week of December to allow for that, but that's a, a planning aspect of it. But I guess it depends on which one, if you wanted to cut out on one.
Yeah, which one?
I can't, that's one of those, I tell my boys, don't give the real answer to that, right? So if you look at the 12th, and I, my options, if you're suggesting I have an option between going to the middle school concert or the school committee? You really want me, I'm not going to answer, I'm going to, no comment. But we'll be sure that both directors, if there are questions that the chair, vice-chair, as Steve has referenced, that you want to be sure that is not, is covered, that's not typically covered, or you have a concern or an issue, bring it to my attention or through me, and we'll make sure. Typically, our Director of Finance will reach out to both Andrea and Greg McAmber, who will be present.
Got it. Open, a number of dates are on the back. We're getting into the holiday season.
The list is long.
Tried to give you just to capture.
School activities for that, so keep in mind, just a reminder, any questions about the school improvement plans or the attendance data, that we should filter them back through the, through that. It is 7:24, unless there's anything else.
You get a gold star.
I'd like to adjourn.
So, a second.
You have a motion at second? If anybody opposes, I mean, does anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Nice job.